Just trying to catch up.
On the mirror, yeah. I think so.
Okay, welcome everybody to these joint work session, the 4pm joint work session for the city council, also acting as the redevelopment agency of December 10th. We have all council members present with the exception of Vice Chair White, who is joining us online. It sounds like she hit some traffic coming back up. So anyway, Marsha, you want to say hello?
Hello, everyone.
All right. Okay, so first up, we'll just do a quick review of our agendas this this afternoon. For the redevelopment agency, we have some minutes and Councilmember Blair. Probably should say Board Member Blair, right? Board Member Blair on that one. And then we are consideration of going into a journey into a closed session. And then after that, we'll have a public hearing on the proposed purchase of the Forest Service Building with three actions. Any questions or concerns or comments on that?
And I
clarification?
Since I'm, I haven't had in, I don't know if if you're gonna vote to purchase the property, but I did have some discussions with legal about whether or not you should take it. Let's say you don't, the vote is no on the purchase, you should still take action on the other two to make a record. Does that make sense? Because I, we had some discussion, even though it seems sort of moot, it it makes it clear that that those would go away.
And we'll take all three presentations together and then open it up for the public hearing and for input, and then we'll go from there. All right, and that's the that's the RDA meeting. We will be having public comments in the redevelopment agency meeting and not in the subsequent special city council meeting. So we'll take comments at that point. And then adjourn for our special city council, which we have a consent item for reappointment to the community and economic development citizen advisory committees. And any any discussion on that? And then we'll have a closed session, consideration to adjourn into a closed session in the city council meeting. And that should wrap up our evening. Unless we don't finish up in here, right? Then we possibly come back. So, all right. Okay, so with that, we'll we'll start off with a report from the Ogden Pioneer Days Foundation. We saw the cowboy hats in the hallway, so we knew they were in the right place. Appreciate you guys being here. We have Steve Handy, the Ogden Pioneer Days Foundation Chairman-elect to come and present. So welcome, welcome to come on up here. I don't know if there's a presentation or or just right, right there and just.
But brought some folks.
Yeah, introduce your friends.
Yeah, I'm gonna introduce, so I'm I'm Steve Handy and now the foundation chair with Alan's with Alan's retirement, Alan Hall's retirement stepping down. And we have Craig Smith, of course, our great sponsor from Smith and Edwards, but Craig is our vice chair of our of our finance. One of our finance vice chair, so he's the guy that knows where all the money's going. And General Pat Condon is with us and he is community and military relations. And the way that we're structured is that we have the six vice chairs. So we're we've just, several, most of us have been in Las Vegas for the last week, Mr. Chair. We have been at the PRCA convention and a couple of nights, the rodeo.
Nice.
And learning a lot of things and gonna share with you just a couple of things for a few minutes. And we excuse Gina Black, who is our vice chair over special events and hospitality. Shannon Noble, who is our vice chair over sponsorships. And Brett Ghee, our vice chair over marketing and ticketing and promotions. So that's the that's the group and we have about seventeen members of our of the foundation as well. You know, every July, we get to kick up our heels and have a lot of fun here in Ogden. And I just thought, and I was given some advice by somebody that said, you know what, Steve? You gotta just just report to the council, let them know what you're doing. And so we have had a lot of fun because we think we have a great report. In fact, we have put together a handout for you. And so I'm gonna just pass those around and let you all have those Councilman Myers pass those around and to folks, folks back here. And we we call this, we call this, but for myself, we call this by the numbers. And so I think you're gonna be super impressed by, you know, we ninety years, we just finished our ninetieth anniversary, as you know. And we came here and and got the council's blessing with the resolution to rename the stadium. We had a significant contribution, as you know, from the Eccles Foundations and named it Spencer Fox Eccles. And I think many of you had come out to the celebration and the event, it was just terrific. But just, we we thought that you really ought to just have a great understanding. And just, just, just one more thing before I say that is that is incredible appreciation to Monty Stewart and his crew and his people for what they have done and what they do every year. And the four million dollar renovation of the stadium is just amazing. People who've seen the old stadium and seen what it what it became for this year, just absolutely amazing. Ogden City did about a million dollars of infrastructure work, you know, we'll call that soft money contribution. But it it made all the difference and it's a, it's a hard thing. It's a hard thing to think about that facility, you know, used five to ten times a year. And 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 what's out there, but what what's happening there is really, really significant. So you can see here, we've written, we've written a note to each of you, not to each of you, but to the council. Just giving you a little bit of a review, paying paying tribute to Monty Stewart. I asked him for some other names, Ashley, Ryan and Jacob and Ogden City Police Lieutenant Cameron Stever and other other officers. We could not have reached the heights that we did this year. And you can see there some of the numbers and I think they're super impressive. You can see that forty eight thousand folks attended over five nights. You can see the ticket revenues. I want to say we printed this before we had the full numbers and paid some bills. But if our, with our sponsorships, it was our sponsorship dollars, Craig was was about four hundred and ninety three thousand dollars in sponsorships. And it's it's really amazing. And so going into twenty twenty five, we have money in the bank and that's a good thing. You always want to have that Councilman Myers remembers the years when that wasn't the case. He remembers that that very, very well. And look at the average price, I mean nineteen dollars. Where can you go get that two or three hours of entertainment for that? The the foundation is, we're not, we're not in the in the business of trying to make a lot of money. We want to pay our bills and we want to put on an incredible celebration for the city and surrounding communities, of course. Hundred sponsors, thousand Cowboys participants, the payouts of five hundred and thirty three thousand, half a million dollars in payouts. You know, the Cowboys and the Cowboys and cowgirls, they pay, they pay a fee in, but then we add money. And I'll tell you about that a little bit, but there's the payouts to all the winners. And I think that's really impressive, the number of volunteers, over five hundred volunteers, the the and just look at the meals served, eight hundred to a thousand meals. And a thousand meals, a hundred per night, post performance, the hospitality, the breakfast over six days, the pre rodeo, the breakfast, the parade, the entrance that we had, the main parade, the estimated attendance, you know, just pulled that out fifty thousand. There's a great photo of of Spence Eccles, the Spencer Fox Eccles at the event. You can see a lot of our promotion is built upon the social media platforms. And you can see how the growth is here, how people love and follow Ogden Pioneer Days. The website visitors, pretty darn impressive, you know, for a five night event, the January through July, the the total visitors, the sessions. I want to make a comment here and and General Condon can comment here too. But you had a this, this photo of John Harrison. The city council did one, did a presentation and a special appreciation to John Harrison. And I didn't, I I don't really know him as well as as General Condon does. But John Harrison is, he is, he is, he is a rodeo celebrity. He's rodeo royalty. They had this, they had this event at the at the convention where they had all of these different awards. You know, the best pickup man, the best, and they even gave awards to the horses and the and the bulls and everything like that. It's terrific, but John Harrison, John Harrison, he won, they had one in a category called the Coors Man in the Can. He's won it three times in a row. He, he, then they have another category called the Clown Barrelman of the Year, three times in a row. And then the comedy act of the year, I don't know how, he won that too. How many times has he won that, three times in a row? And they have the the specialty acts, they have these booths, you know, where they're selling and they're taking their, they've got their calendars out and they're they're lining up there. There's, but I went to, I went, I introduced myself to him. And he said, he said, Stephen said, would you please convey, I've been meaning to do it, you know how things are? Would you please convey to the Ogden City Council my incredible appreciation for that just special moment for me and my family? And he has this wonderful family, so we are really, really lucky to have him in Ogden. And when I saw him in the booth, he was wearing, wearing a vest that said Ogden Pioneer Days. And so he, he, he doesn't shy away from his, his love of our, of our, of our community. Anything to add about John Harrison Colonel or General? I didn't want to demote you here.
And his family from Sulphur, Oklahoma.
Yeah.
And if if you want to meet an incredible representative of Americana, it's John and his family. They are just the most delightful people and they have three children, a daughter, a son, actually two daughters and a son, and they are the most polite, most courteous, most well behaved children you will ever find anywhere. They're just a delight to be around. And I would tell you, Ogden, Utah is their favorite place to come during the rodeo season.
That's great. Yeah, I appreciate that. I just also want to just maybe magnify that comment to Councilman Blair, who originally came to that with that idea that this is really a recognition that needs to happen. And so I don't know if he's gotten his belt buckle yet or not. We we ordered belt buckles and that was part of the award. So if we haven't got it to him, maybe we'll hang on to it and give it to him next year.
That that is terrific. He would really appreciate it. And just as General Condon said, just a lovely, cute little family and just two little, two girls and a little, and a young man, a boy, and just, just terrific people. You know, Ogden Pioneer Days has an amazing reputation when we were, I think it was the last night, Roger Mooney, our longtime announcer, I don't know him well, but he, he said, Steve, he says, I want to tell you something. I said, what's that? And he says, I'm not just saying this because I have a contract here. But he says, I don't, I don't think you people really realize how how special Ogden Pioneer Day is, what you really have going for you here. And I says, what do you mean? He said, the way, he said, it, there were some times, there were some times, it was a little rickety, you know, during the the time of, the time of privatization, you know, the 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 growth into that. But he said, you have really grown something incredible here and it's, it's recognized throughout the industry. And people love coming here, not just for this spectacular setting, but for the way they are treated and and the and the hospitality that they feel. And then I was, I was, I was having a hamburger and there was a cowboy there and I started chatting him up and he was named Troy Pruitt. And it was, he was a former calf roper, but he said, oh, he says, I know Ogden really well. He said, I, he said, I used to come to Ogden and compete, but he says, my son's competing now. And he said, you know, he said, and he was describing the river and putting their horses in the river and wow, I mean, just knows all about it. And he said, the way that you treat the Cowboys and the contestants and the cowgirls is well known throughout the industry. And it it speaks highly of your community, it really does. But please add anything, Craig, anything, please.
Roger Mooney, Roger is just the consummate rodeo announcer. He's been selected several years in a row to announce the national finals rodeo in Las Vegas, which is the World Series equivalent for the rodeo crowd across the country. They take the top fifteen money winners during the year in each of the rodeo events and they gather in Las Vegas. At this time, the rodeo is still going on and have about ten days of rodeo where the Cowboys and cowgirls compete for some, some pretty heavy prizes. Anyway, Roger Mooney has been selected several years to announce that. And one of our patrons at the rodeo last year was aware of that and they were talking to Roger after the rodeo. And the patron said to Roger, you know, we're really lucky here in Ogden that that Ogden gets the announcer that announces the NFR rodeos. And Roger thanked the patron and, but he said, you've got it wrong. He said, the NFR is lucky to have the announcer that announces the Ogden Pioneer.
Politically.
And it just, you know, speaks to what Steve was saying about how much this rodeo is appreciated, not only by the contestants, but also by others that support our rodeo every year.
Thought you ought to know that. I was at the rodeo in Las Vegas on Saturday night and he was, they have two announcers and he was one of the announcers, Roger. Of the seven hundred and twenty three PRC recognized rodeos, Ogden Pioneer Days is fourteenth on the on the payout list. And of course, it's all, it's all about money. I think I forgot to mention Rick Davis, our vice chair for rodeo operations. Rick is well known in the industry. He was elected during the convention last week to the Association of Rodeo Committees Board. And he was also on a panel that he was invited to be on a panel with the folks from Cheyenne, a rodeo in South Dakota and a rodeo in Colorado to talk about stadium expansion and financing. And he did just a terrific job talking about what happened here in in Ogden. You know, we have a few years ago, Ogden Pioneer Days got on the, you know, the streaming service, the Cowboy Channel, and they paid us five thousand dollars, Rick was telling us. Then then it was renegotiated and we got thirty five thousand dollars a year, including twenty twenty four. The contract was just renegotiated for a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars a year for the next three years. And so that funding that we get, is that right, Craig? Yeah, you were told that, that funding that we're gonna, we're gonna use for our our added money payouts, because we have to stay competitive with those guys down, down in the capital city and then in Spanish Fork as well. We have to stay competitive there and we want to stay competitive and Ogden is well known. So this is a tremendous time of year where these cow, these Cowboys don't have to get on a plane, they don't have to drive twelve hours to work. You know, they can, this hundred mile corridor, less than that between here and Spanish Fork, they can really have a, they can really have a payday. I wanted to talk about added money, so we should, we talk about these numbers, this added money. So the contestants pay money and last year, we we paid out thirty five thousand dollars per event, times the nine events for three hundred and fifteen thousand. This year in twenty twenty five, next year in twenty twenty five, we're gonna go to, with this help from the Cowboy Channel and some other funding. We've got some friends in the legislature, don't we, Craig? That's very, very nice to know that. We're gonna pay out forty three thousand five hundred per event, times the nine events. And I want to, now, I want to tell you too, that we had a delightful Miss Rodeo Utah McCarty Kelly. She just ends her term here now, the end of the month. We were there, I was there at the coronation ceremony. She finished fourth and we were very disappointed about that, but she's a terrific young woman, but did a great, great job representing us and Ogden Pioneer Days in the state of Utah. The next year's queen is Olivia Favero, Weber County native, and she's gonna do very well too. I want to explain to you maybe just some plans that we have for next year, just to tell you what we're doing. We, we had, I had a note from Lynn Wood, who does our our CPA. And he said, Stephen, he says, you know, we're not really doing enough to reach out to the Hispanic community. So Rick and I had a lunch with Mayor Nadalski and he said, what do you think about that? And he said, Steve, he said, you guys go talk to Luis Lopez, your former colleague. And we did that and he has all these ideas. And so we're gonna, we're gonna see what we can do to to do a better reach out, reaching out to the Hispanic community in the Ogden area. I think that will be just terrific. We're gonna also work, we're gonna, although Alan stepped down from from this role, we're not gonna let him retire. He's gonna help us, we're gonna start an endowment for Ogden Pioneer Days. And we're gonna try to raise some, some, a rainy day fund that we can set out there. A fun thing that we're gonna have, you know, we start in twenty twenty five, we go on Saturday night. And then we will have Miss Skip Sunday and then then four nights. But we have this idea that we that we brought forward last year, this this year, called Bronx Bowls and Bands. And so we're, we're, we're looking at the financial numbers and see if we can pull it off. But we would have on that Friday night, we would have a real name, country and western person. We'd, you know, have some bowls and some Bronx. This would be a different crowd. I mean, this isn't an eighteen dollar ticket. This is a fifty, sixty, seventy dollar ticket. And so we're, we're, we're looking very, very seriously at that to see if we can pull that off and what the, what the, what the financial risk would be. And we're trying to nail that down. Also, I want to mention that the bylaws are pretty, our bylaws are pretty outdated. Go back to two thousand and eight and they need a real facelift and some editing. And so we're working, we're working on that. You know, that's Mr. Chair and council members, that's what we wanted to report to you, just spend a few minutes to let you know the great things that are happening at what we think is the signature event here in in Ogden City. And appreciate so much your support, couldn't, couldn't be done without Ogden City's support. And know that you have a lot of fun when you go and you should have fun and it is a great deal of fun. Anything to add, Craig, that you want to add?
You said enough.
We're doing, we're doing great.
Living inside a rodeo, I used to rodeo for quite a few years. We might not be the top as far as payout, but I guarantee you Ogden as far as reputation and willingness to come. Yeah. Is easily one of the top five rodeos in the United States. So be proud that you guys host such a great rodeo.
Yeah.
It it is really amazing. In fact, there's in this area, Steve mentioned, there's a three rodeos, I'll be quick, I apologize. But there's also Cheyenne and Napa going on.
Yeah, too.
And Napa's a top five payout rodeo. Napa, Idaho is a very high rated rodeo as well. They actually are going to move their dates next year. They've been in that, the same dates as Ogden's rodeo for, I mean, the thirty years that I've been involved with rodeo. I know I don't look that old. But they're actually moving their dates because they're having a hard time competing with what we're doing here. So even though we're, we don't have the payout that some of those other rodeos do reputational wise, quality of rodeo, quality of fans, quality of facilities. We're, we really are a top five rodeo in the nation. And we got funds in place to keep it going for a long time. That's all I really wanted to say.
That's what I wanted to say. And thanks to Monty and his crew and his team and everything they do for us. And we had that electrical glitch, we're gonna fix that this year, right? That's never gonna happen again. They're working on it, yeah. Yeah. Do you have any questions or comments or just anything? Just.
There's three chairs, welcome.
Yeah, thank you so much.
We thought you would appreciate really having a report, not just, you know, hey, we'll see in July, but just know what happened this year and 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 our plans for going forward.
Yeah, I've had that opportunity to to help out at the breakfast and all the Cowboys and cowgirls are so amazing when they come through, so so appreciative and it is a really special event.
We don't really know the economic impact, we're trying to nail that down and that's another, another goal with Weaver State. But there's a pretty significant economic impact.
Yeah, maybe our visiting friends can help us on that one.
Yeah. Yeah, the city can help us with that.
All right. Oh, Rich, you had a comment?
I I just wanted to tell you that I've been going to the rodeo since I was a little guy, I've lived in Ogden all my life and 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 it has only gotten better. It's, you're doing great, but I looked at the payout and those bull riders need more money. I don't know who'd do that for that kind of money. I know. Yeah, the bear rack guys too, yeah. You guys do a great job, thank you so much.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, guys.
A lot of force, yeah. Thanks, Steve, Craig and General Condon, thank you. It's always good to see a fellow spiker out there. Yeah. Okay. Okay, up next, we'll invite Jeremy Smith, the Community Development Director, to talk to us about the proposed amendments for infill housing guidelines and a proposed concept plan for six oh five North Jackson. Welcome. Either one.
All right, great to be here with you this evening. Yeah, so I have two things on the agenda, so you get more than me than you may want, but we'll just get started. So this first one is the proposed infill guideline ordinance updates. Just to give a little background on this, infill housing program guidelines were initially adopted in two thousand and eleven, was to give guidance on how the city sponsored infill projects occurred. And then they received an update in two thousand and fifteen to give some more outlines required that any home, any projects over ten homes that were on contiguous lots or an acquisition of a property for infill over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars would require approval of the concept to come before city council. And so the first one, the updates that were considering, the second part of it is, excuse me. One of the things that needs to be updated is that guidelines are missing some language from HUD, where it requires fair housing regulations in the language when we do infill development. And these are just clarifications about fair housing accessibility and have some very specific things that we need to implement into those guidelines. And then the second, and this is just the other, just an outline, the other outline we're looking at is that two hundred and fifty thousand dollar mark, those established in two thousand and fifteen update. That was based on the median sales price at the time in two thousand and fifteen of a of a home in Ogden City was a hundred and forty four thousand, nine hundred and sixty three dollars. That, of course, as all know, has changed. Today, the most current data we have shows that the median sales price is four hundred and seven thousand dollars, a hundred and sixty two. So quite a jump. And so we're looking now to update that amount from two fifty to four hundred to better reflect the market, the current market. And let's see, this is I think I've mixed up a couple of my presentations here, so. Hang on one second. Got a medley, so I may have sent the wrong presentation. I used a template here, let me just push through this a little bit. Yeah. Okay, so I I've attached the wrong one. Let me, let me just speak to this part of it though up here. So little, I find too, I apologize. But this, this information is really just gets to the gist of it and there isn't much more beyond that. I did want to share the projects that were, have gone through this approval process in the past. So it's, it doesn't happen a lot, but we have a handful of projects that we've done that are over ten contiguous lot or ten continuous homes. Those are, of course, Oakden, Stone Hill, we have one called Lincoln Cottages. And then the new one that we'll be talking about tonight is six oh five North Jackson, that we're tentatively calling Lewis Ridge. And so those are the four that have, that meet that threshold that would need to be, come to you for approval, that we've done in the past or we'll be doing tonight. As far as that two hundred and fifty thousand dollar threshold, we haven't seen that happen, that hasn't been an RDA project. So the city projects, we've, we've been able to stay below that on our acquisitions for infill purchases. The most recent one we did was on twenty eight hundred Monroe. So if you notice, there's a couple of new homes that were built there on that block just recently. That was, we purchased that property in two thousand and twenty two in February. There was a home that had fire damage there. It couldn't be repaired, was demolished, it was actually a pretty big piece of property. The city bought that, was subdivided into two lots and we were able to build those two homes from that. We we bought that for two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And that was in twenty twenty two, since in the market has, the prices have gone up again. And so if we were to try and do a project like that with these current guidelines, we would have to come before you and get that approval. The challenge we have with that, not that we don't like coming, the the real estate window is so short for us to be able to do that. Sometimes we have less than a week by the time we go and say, hey, this is for sale. Would you like to buy it? We're competing with other people that may be buying it. And if it's in a real strategic area that we're trying to get, it, it's in our interest to do it, such as the one on Monroe. That was one we thought we can have a big impact on the street and do a lot of improvements and had to act on it quickly. Without raising that limit, that would eliminate our ability to act as quickly as we need to. And so that basically sums up the the proposals that we're looking for, the federal guidelines, changes or adding that language and also just increasing that from two hundred and fifty thousand dollar limit to four hundred thousand dollars to reflect the market. So happy to answer any other questions, but it's pretty simple, what we're looking to do.
So those, those two items will come together or they could be separated if we wanted to potentially?
Right now, it's part of one resolution.
One resolution.
And I mean, we could, we could separate those, but that, right now, we're proposing just to do that with one resolution.
What are some examples of the the fair housing guidelines, clarifying the language that they, you know, developers would have to comply with?
Yeah.
Some examples of that?
So it's, it's pretty straightforward. Anytime, and this is only applies to federally funded projects that are infill. So the one I just talked about on, or if we talked about like Oakden or Stone Hill, if it didn't have federal money put into the project, then this wouldn't apply. But if it does, you have to make sure when you're doing an RFP. uh, money put into the project, then this wouldn't apply. But if it does, you have to um, make sure when you're doing an RFP um, to builders or developers that are, that are looking to do a project like that, that they're that they're recognizing that there are accessibility requirements that come along with that ADA compliance and that starts from the design um, through the construction process. So making sure that, and it's anything, and it mostly really applies to multi family units, five or more units is the specific language. Um, if they're dealing with that, then this this has to be implemented where they're saying every, one out of every, um, I forget the number, has to be ADA compliant. So it has to have certain amount of accessibility within the actual unit. Um, so it just outlines all that and it's all part of HUD section five oh four. Um, and that was just one of the things as we were reviewing our documentation, our HUD compliance that was missing from some of our guidelines and we felt the infill guidelines was the most appropriate place to put that. So we're in compliance with HUD. And that's kind of a confusing thing, but
Yeah.
That's what they're.
Yeah, so just a question on the projects that you've completed. When you complete those, of course you sell them, you pay off the construction costs and other things, but do you also have any return on investment that goes back into your funds that you use to purchase other properties or?
Sure, yeah. So some of these, um, all the projects we do, if there are funds that are made above and beyond, you know, the cost of purchase land and build the house and sell it off, then that does go back into our programs. We recycle it, reinvest it back in any, in future projects. So yeah, we call that program income and that's a big part of the program, being able to just turn those dollars over and make sure they're keeping, doing more, more projects, so. Yes.
Well, for me, I just would like to comment that the efforts of Ogden City and many other people, but Ogden City particularly, because they started early, has just changed the whole entire east of Washington Boulevard neighborhoods over many years. And so I just commend the effort that you put into this and I know it goes, maybe predates you a little bit when we add those in there, but it's uh, very significant what's happening and it's, it's really great for our city. So
Thank you.
Kudos to what you're doing.
Thanks.
Ju- just real quick, I, so you said that we haven't updated the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar requirement since two thousand and fifteen?
Correct.
Wow, okay. Markets changed a little.
It, it has changed and it's not one that we use a, a ton to do because most of the things that we buy have been under that. It's just been recently in the past couple of years where we see it's like, oh, this, this may be a problem. It may be a challenge, but um, we've been able to, to buy properties under that amount for, and it, the original intent was we can buy multiple properties, right? When you're looking at a hundred and hundred thousand dollars for a single family home back in two thousand and fifteen, which is because we were buying ones that were really rough and needed to be replaced. Um, the world's changed, right? That's not an option. Even the worst properties are, are north of two hundred and fifty thousand, so.
Maybe just a one other question and, and it just maybe just trying to help me think through this and that is I agree that what, what Ogden City's done in the area, especially that east of east of Harrison or Washington in that area is we've seen some quite a bit of good work done and the markets have changed. And so I'm just wondering how much you know, private development can fill that role now is, are we seeing that being filled by private developers without the city having to be involved as much? Or, I mean, I'm just, I'm just different parts of the city. I know it probably applies differently, but um, that, that's my only potential hang up on that. It's just like, are we in competition with private developers that could do what, what the city's been doing now that the revitalization is sort of kind of lit the match and starting to take off? Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, it's a great question. Um, the challenge, I think, and, and that normally would, would definitely be a problem where you're, you're competing with the private sector. The challenge that Ogden City has specifically in the East Central neighborhood is just there's not available land that's really available out there. So anytime someone comes in a private development, you know, they have a margin they have to make. Um, and it's really tough to do that when you're doing redevelopment. Most of the time you're looking at projects that we have to tear this down. We've got to bring in new sewer and water laterals to it. The lot costs to do that are so expensive that the opportunity costs that usually private developers will find is like, man, I can make a lot more money doing this in other places. And so the benefit, you know, the city's program has been successful because we don't have that, um, the same uh, need to do that. A lot of times we're breaking even, you know, we're having to subsidize some of this uh, to make it work all in the interest of just, you know, uh, improving the neighborhood and providing these homeownership opportunities that wouldn't be there without it. So even though the market has changed, those costs have changed with it. The prices are up or so are construction costs and we're not seeing, I would say, a huge demand for people to come in and do these little spot infill things where it's one or two homes, just because the, the opportunity costs are usually in other places. But there are some, we've seen other, some opportunities come up, you know, there's been um, some churches that have been demolished, um, that private development had, had taken to and, you know, those will, those are in the works. So when we do see an opportunity like that, but this is better in the hands of depending on the neighborhood it's in, private, we definitely try and encourage that.
Thanks. Yeah, that helps.
One other question, Jeremy, do you, could you give us a number maybe of homes that were built in Ogden that you have done as opposed to private development? What?
Yeah, I can, I've recently, we've been working some of those numbers. I can, you know, I, I started here in two thousand and nine uh, with one year sabbatical in there somewhere that we don't need to talk about that, but um, uh, since that time, I think we've had eighty-seven new homes since two thousand and nine coming just to the East Central neighborhood. Um, so it's, it's been significant. Before that, you know, there's certainly a lot more, but uh, that's just to show just in the past fifteen years, it's been a huge uh, influx of new housing in East Central.
So we have seen numbers on numbers of permits that have been issued for building new homes in Weber County and it's pretty significantly low right now. And so I guess my thought is Ogden City seems to at least have some skin in the game, some interest to try to continue to develop homes, even though some other private entities may not be doing it anymore. So my question is, what are the, what are the numbers comparatively? And you may not even follow it.
No, we, we do look at that. I mean, our, our world is definitely different than the rest of the county, just that we've been built out for a hundred years, right? The, the land that we have to build new homes on is super scarce and usually we're tearing down a home or a home that's been burned down or something and replacing it that way. So um, our permit count um, definitely lags some of the other cities in the county, just based on their land availability and their ability to go in and do you know, a lot bigger projects. Um, but it does, um, for what we have, um, we're definitely producing a substantial amount of homes based on the available land that we do have.
And if I might, Chair, um, I think another significant thing about what the city's doing is they're creating a for sale product. Um, there have been some single family homes, well, town homes that developers have done without city subsidy, but they've been for rent.
And that's true. And the majority of our homes are um, moderate income. This isn't something, you know, the city in times could charge more for the homes. We're not, that's not the motivation. It's providing uh, quality housing to, you know, we try and produce to a wide variety of affordability and make sure that we're, we're doing things that are, are great just for the city as a whole.
Sounds good. So this comes to us next week for action. So if any other questions come up, let's uh, get those in as soon as we can to.
I think it's.
Or is it?
It might be.
It's gonna be in, in January.
January. Okay, sorry. Should have checked that. January seventh. Is the North Jackson also the seventh or is that next week? It's also the seventh. Okay, yeah. Okay. So we've got a little more time to consider.
Okay. Do we move on to the next one?
Let's move on to the next, next one.
So uh, this is very similar to what we were just talking about. So the newest project that Ogden City is uh, considering or that has purchased for the purpose of an infill development is the property located at six oh five North Jackson Avenue. And this is little background on that project. Um, the property was purchased from the Ogden School District in June of two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, it's approximately seven acres. Um, then additional point three acres was purchased just on the northern boundary uh, recently, just in the past couple of months ago. Um, that's the property in blue or the outline in blue there on this exhibit. And then there's a, a canal that's actually part of the seven acres that runs just on the west edge of that uh, property. Um, the, the property was actually rezoned a few months ago from R six or R one six to R one five. And that was in order to increase the density. So we better utilize the land that was available. Um, and so the next step is we go through this uh, this infill process um, based on the guidelines we just talked about, then because there'll be more than ten contiguous lots on this, we bringing this to you for approval on a conceptual layout. So this has not been fully engineered. This is just the uh, high level conceptual drawing. Um, it may slightly change based on once a, the design actually comes out, but significant things will all, should all remain in place, not lot count, basic lot design. Location of amenity, that type of thing. So uh, we hired a consultant, Watsat Civil Engineers to help us um, come up with, you know, the best layouts for this property. Um, they proposed uh, four options and the city staff met to consider which ones. Um, and based on our discussions with the consultants and uh, members of the city staff, we landed on uh, on this option. So this is the concept, um, uh, we are proposing moving forward with. This is a concept that shows twenty-nine single family homes. Um, it would also entail improving and completing uh, Jackson Avenue. And that would install uh, curb and gutter that is not currently there. It also needs to be repaved and it would be, it would incorporate that in it as well. Of course, have new public streets. Uh, there, the canal on the west edge would be piped. And the easement um, over that would uh, remain in place. And then we propose the pedestrian access that connects from uh, to the existing neighborhood to the west.
Jeremy, can I ask you a question there?
Yeah.
On the detention, the lot that, well, it's not, I guess it's a lot, but um, there are a number of uh, detention basins that are in very poor shape up in that end of town. What can be done to make sure that that becomes an amenity rather than a detriment?
That's a great question. So uh, we have a few options that we've looked at, some, some things that we've done, and this comes down to the design feature, so I can't tell you exactly, but I can tell you it would be one of these options. So uh, if you're familiar with Stone Hill, we have a, a park that's in the middle of that, that development. And underneath that park is an underground uh, detention basin. It's a tank basically. So um, that makes it a lot more usable as far as functionally. You don't have the depression and it's easier to maintain and more usable. It's a lot more expensive. And so that's one of the things that have to be considered to, to do that. Um, the other thing is to, it could be incorporated in with one of the lots and have an easement on it. And so someone would maintain it as their yard and they would be responsible for maintaining it, but they would also get to enjoy it, right? Um, so those are things we have to look at. Once we, if it's separated and has to be on its own, then it most likely would have to be part of an HOA or the city would have to embrace it and um, decide to maintain it. And those are things that have to be determined. But we are conscious of that and that's um, anytime we see detention basins, we want to make sure it's not just going to be a future blight because that defeats the purpose of of some of these redevelopment.
Yeah, as you move forward, just if you, if you make sure you keep that in mind, that, that I think is uh, the tolerance for more bad detention basins is, is pretty low.
Yes.
And uh, you know, and matter of fact, there's one two, not, you know, maybe a couple of blocks from this one and you know, I, so that's all I, I would, I would just say that's probably a deal killer if we're, if it's just gonna be a, an, an invention that is just weeds and stuff.
Yeah, I think we can all think of examples where that um, it's not ideal. So.
Also, I, you know, just, just to throw this out, I mean, that could be an amenity to that little development that, that could be a pretty neat thing. Um, a little pocket park.
Sure.
You know, not, not that we need a big park there, but.
No, but it, it is uh, adjacent to the, the public access, the pedestrian access. So whatever happens there, we want to make sure that is maintained well and adds to the neighborhood and not detracts from it. Okay.
Jeremy, um, just real quick, so Steve did a good job of talking me off the ledge of the um, of the cul-de-sacs. Are you guys laughing at me? I can see this back. Um, but um, tell, and he did tell me there was a reason why and, and if you could just state it for the public record, because I've been pretty adamant about street connectivity. You did a good job. It's not just one cul-de-sac. I appreciate.
Well, I, I probably should have showed you all four options. I debated going back and forth and I, and I can show those to you. And then
You're, you're fine. I'm, I'm, I'm.
But I've got them here too. So we will get to it, just so you can see. But the um, the reason that we have, you know, the connectivity, um, you know, we try and do as much as we can with that and use the land the best available option. So in fact, I'll, I'm just gonna jump to that because I think it's going to um, so these were the co- the concepts we came up with. Okay, so this is the first one. This one had thirty lots on it, but it's just a knuckle in the cul-de-sac and we really struggled with that for the same concern that um, Councilman White has about this. So it's there isn't the connectivity. It's hard, you know, you go in and you have to turn around. It's just um, it, it's a little tough to do that. But the bigger concern we had was those extra deep north lots to the north. So you've got a huge amount of land back there that um, we didn't see being utilized very well. And so the next option was this where we, instead of the cul-de-sac, you would punch that through. And so it had a little better connectivity as far as not just dead end street stuff, but still had that challenge. We have these really deep lot land that we felt was wasted uh, more or less. And this is the one that we are recommending, um, which addressed that. So it addressed those really deep lots. Um, and just, it, it does have a cul-de-sac, but if, if you're looking at this from a street view, it's very shallow. It's not going to be a big deep end thing. So it's just basically a an expanded knuckle. That's kind of how we refer this to. It just gets, and it does provide a few more lots in it that you wouldn't get if it, if it wasn't there. So and then this is your favorite one. You love this, which is two cul-de-sacs.
Yeah, that was a good one.
So yeah, there's always a reason we need, we didn't pick this one. But um, anyway, so I, the reasoning behind this specifically is we felt it made the best use of the land available. It's check the boxes as far as connectivity and maximize the land. We're able to um, yield twenty-nine lots on it. So.
And about how big are those lots then?
So the, they have to be a minimum of, of five thousand square feet, but I don't think any of them are that small. So they're ranging from about five thousand to eight thousand square feet. So probably closer to six day.
And the types of homes you're building there are that moderate income home as well?
Yeah, so I'll show you, jump back, back here again, sorry. So this is kind of what we're proposing and this is not, this is just a, you know, something I stole off the internet or I borrowed and put in this presentation. So not, not saying this is the house. It's an example of a type of house that you may see out there. So these are uh, moderate income homes that are built, um, great construction material. Want to make sure these are built very well and it'll last a really long time and as long as they're maintained well, but they will be efficient, right? So um, in the East Central, you know, typically we'll do a detached garage because that's the requirements of it and architecturally appropriate. Uh, this type of house is appropriate for the surrounding neighborhood and allows us to build these much more economically. And still look good. We don't have to do the thing where we just have a garage in the front and a little door hidden behind it where we want these to stand out as really being bright spots in the neighborhood and, and add some great life there. So um, we do, we are proposing making these ADU ready, um, something that we've just started doing on most of the new homes that we built, where water table allows and that type of thing. Um, and so it would give an option if um, homeowners wanted to finish their basement out and make it an ADU unit. Um, if they did that, you know, this potentially has ability to be close to sixty units on this property, which is, you know, it'd be a great great option for those that want to do it, or it can just be finished and people can use it. But average range is about fourteen hundred to eighteen hundred square feet on the homes. Uh, we propose water wise landscaping. Uh, this picture does not show that. I want to make it clear that's a lot of grass and anyway, we have some better options. And then we would just work this through the uh, Home Sweet Ogden Program, which we'd sell these to owner occupants. So that's the concept behind those. Um, the other part of this is we do need to, um, you also do have to prove the, the proposed financing for the project. So you, you will prove the concept. We'd also talk about uh, how this, how it gets paid for. And so the background is we bought this with quality neighborhood initiative funds. Couple of years ago now, I forgot the date, but it's, it's been a minute. Uh, that was the price on that was a million seventy-five thousand dollars. And then um, the proposal is uh, future CIP requests, we've submitted um, the engineer's estimate to complete that is one million three hundred and thirty-five thousand. Um, that would include the work done on Jackson. The engineer's estimate to complete that is one million three hundred and thirty-five thousand. Um, that would include the work done on Jackson Avenue as well. And it also includes piping the canal, um, across there. So. And that's a request of, uh, the canal company that maintains it. And then the vertical construction. So that's a development, the vertical construction of all the homes is, would be done through our synchrony line of credit. It's already existing. We use that just for construction financing. And then when we sell the home, we use the proceeds to pay that construction financing off. And the proceeds to care of commissions and all the carrying costs that go with the home. So. Those, that's a financing that we use on the project, um, and as well as the concept. I think that might be all. Do you have any other questions or anything I've missed? There's a canal crossing. I thought. I, I did want to bring this up because there was a, some questions about this. So. The reason we didn't move forward with the canal crossing, we had our engineers, uh, come up with the concept to say, what would that look like? And so, um. Using my really awesome PowerPoint skills, I put this over to give me an idea of where that would happen. Um, and it lines up with that property. So from an area perspective, this looks like it might be a feasible option. As we start drilling into it to actually figure out what it would take to do that, the challenge becomes more of an elevation problem. That canal is much higher than the adjacent property to the west. And so we found that in order to make this work and to meet the standards required for this road connection. We'd actually have to raise the property, the street on the west side of that to come up to, to, to meet the. You know, because we can't drop the canal. It has to stay where it is. So the water doesn't just pool there. So. Um, what that does is have to raise that existing street up two to three feet. Um, so the surrounding neighbors around the property are then have impacted where they've got retaining walls in their front yard. Um, they've got, will have to redo their driveways. We're now dealing with their private property and encroaching and. Anyway, and, and the cost that go with that, the estimate was, um, a minimum five hundred thousand. And that's as long as we don't have to wiggle the canal at all to make that work. And that little cost go up from there exponentially. So. When we conferred with, um, the engineering team and planning team, we decided the, based on this, um, the best. Option would be move forward without, uh, pursuing that vehicular connection and just using the pedestrian. Uh, connection and enhancing that wherever, if possible. So. Anyway, I wanted to put that out. I know there was some initial comments about that. So happy to answer any more questions or.
Chair, I've got two things. Uh, one is I forgot to disclose that. Um, I do have property that adjoins this. We share a property that went about ten feet long, I think. Doesn't affect, uh, my. Objectivity on this. And the other was, uh, you know, we, I was the one that kind of brought this up. Cause it was, uh, it, it did become a discussion point when the school district owned it and wanted to use that property. But I, I do kind of wonder, and it's, it's not, I just don't understand how you're gonna, if. You, you gotta get sewer out of that because you're not going to take it to mountain or, or to Jackson because that's higher still. How are you going to get sewer across that?
So we, we've looked at that. The sewer does run through there, but it is deep enough that we can actually go under the canal. And connect into that and meet the flow needed. So that, that at least worked to our benefit. But the actual canal itself was just too high to make the road part of it work. But we can, we can go under.
Yeah. If, if you make it get enough pedestrian crossing there, that makes it inviting, um, it solves some of the problem. Of, of no vehicular access, but, uh. You know, that, that would be ultimately the nicest thing if we could get some cars across there, but. But I understand the issue. I've, I've looked at that and scratched my head a few times myself. So.
Yeah. Yeah. It's a, it's kind of a perk one.
I have a few things. Um, Jeremy, you mentioned these would be a for-sale product. Will they be deed restricted for owner occupant?
So that, that remains to be, um, determined. Right now, we sell all of our homes to owner occupants, right? So they have to go through the Home Sweet Ogden process, which they apply and have to, to basically say, yes, I'm going to be. The owner and I will be living in the home. And that's, you know, part of the contract they enter in when they buy a home from us. Uh, deed restrictions, uh, above and beyond that are something that we haven't done in the past, but definitely can consider. Thing we, we find with deed restrictions is, is an enforcement issue. And so there are a couple of routes you can go down. If you're wanting to do that, um, either you have an HOA with some CCNRs. That are responsible for enforcing that. If you wanted to say, hey, there's no rentals in this, in this project. Um, then it becomes on the HOA to make sure and then plus that's happening. Or if the city were to establish that, then it becomes a city responsibility if there is no HOA. Right? So the city's then in charge of enforcing that and, um, that it's, it's a tough thing to do. It's not impossible, but it would take a whole nother, uh, level of kind of monitoring.
Yep. Okay. Thank you. I love that these are going to be ADU ready. I think that helps the owner of the property. Subsidize their mortgage with rental income. Um, and I think that's great. I, I know there are ADUs that are kind of of two descriptions that I'll, I'll, I'll share descriptions. One where the majority of the living space at the basement level is below grade. And one where you've got kind of a, almost a half-story or a garden level, uh, basement. Have you considered what this would be? There's one that I think is a lot more attractive. And I don't know what that does for your consideration as the builder of these homes.
Sure. Yeah. A lot of that has to do with the topography, the lot that you're building them on. If you're talking about like a daylighted basement, where you have a walkout basement on the back half of it, a lot of that is because a lot, a lot is sloped and you can do. You know, you actually walk out and, and everyone's probably familiar with homes that do that. It becomes a little more challenging if you're dealing on a flatter lot. There is some pretty good topography on this property where it's, um, sloping from east to west. Um, so that may be an option. We do plan on doing that on our, um, the infill development. We're doing it at Sycamore Cove where we do have some. Properties that have a pretty good slope in the back and they will have, you know, a lot of light on that backside of them. So. Definitely we'd like to do that where, um, the lot accommodates it.
Yeah. It just makes it a more attractive piece of property. And then finally, um, with regard to that public infrastructure improvements and additions. Is there a reason why we wouldn't just, instead of pay for those, we don't just roll them into the cost of the development?
Uh, say that again. I didn't.
If, if, rather than pay for the street and the water and the sewer with CIP money, which I understand you're proposing. Uh, why not just say, okay, this is going to cost us a million and a half dollars. We're going to roll that in proportionately to the twenty-nine lots.
Okay.
And the twenty-nine home sales.
Yeah. So the, the model we've typically followed in the past, because we don't, I mean, we hire things out. Of course, the city isn't the ones out building the homes. We do an RFP, RFP to, to hire a contractor to come in and do that. So. That has basically, the city has acted basically as a developer in these infill projects. We've gone in and done that and had some cost savings on that part of it. If, um, we wanted to, to, like a builder to take a more active role in that, they would probably. Want to, um, take over more of the ownership because we have, we maintain ownership all the way through the project. The builders are essentially building, um, spec homes for us. So they come in, we own the ownership until we sell it and move it on from there. So. Those are things we can look at, but wrapping it in there, it, it really becomes complicated if, um. A home builder, they're not always developers, I guess, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I understand, I think, uh, what you're saying, but it's some. There's must be some way where the city could consider that million and a half dollars to spread over twenty-nine lots. And that's the, the cost of a lot and the cost of the infrastructure. That's the starting point. And then we put a house on it and then we sell it for.
Right. Well, this, this, here lies the challenge. Because if we're looking at this as a moderate income housing development, where we're saying ballpark to save four hundred thousand dollars per home. What it costs to actually develop that property and build a home on that and have enough money to cover your costs is, um. I'm not going to say impossible, but really, really close.
Chair, can I?
And, yeah.
Time in a little bit on that too. Uh, just, just to keep a perspective is this is a redevelopment. This, this road has already been, it's, it's already city-owned. So it's not being developed and then dedicated to this, to the city because of the development. So it makes it more of a, you know, it's, it's the city taking care of its road is what's really going on. Now, when it was developed, it didn't have curb and gutter. That was the only thing it really lacked along there. And that's, that's the new thing that, that the city is doing is put curb and gutter in. But that has had houses on it before and has been developed in the past. So it's not, it looks like bare ground because it kind of is, but. It's just been, it's, it's re-bare ground.
Uh, let me just clarify one more thing.
We're going to trench stuff off of Jackson into this seven acres.
Right.
Stub it into each one of those lots.
I'll just tell you, and just, just to simplify it, there is a reason you're not seeing very mental, very many single-family homes selling for that four hundred thousand dollar range. It's because the construction costs are so high and development costs are so high that to get in here and do that, we could do that. But the homes, to make that work, you would have to charge north of six hundred thousand per home. Which, um, that's why, and any home that's being built right now is, is gigantic. Because that's where developers make their money, right? They don't make them on this smaller product. So. And that's really why the city would be involved in this project. So we can offer a moderate income housing product. Without having to get a big margin on it, I guess.
Does a, uh, and, and I've, the que- the, the next question I have, and thanks for letting me open a can of worms here, Jeremy. Is there anything limiting or holding the city to a moderate income home? Is there any, is there any reason we can't build seven hundred thousand dollar homes here?
No, there's no federal money or anything as far as that goes that would require us to do that. So if that was, uh, what the city decided was in the best interest. That absolutely could be done. Um. But I think philosophically, the reason the city is involved in this is one to renovate or to help re-establish the neighborhood. Uh, and also to provide, uh, a product where, that is missing right now. There's just a huge gap of this type of housing, um, a modern income housing available out there. So.
So can I just piggyback off of that? Have we looked at or ran numbers on what is actually better for? That, like, an area or our city, whether it be twenty-nine. Moderate income housings, units or putting in, let's say, eighteen. I mean, if we're, if we're going to build them for north of six hundred thousand, I would assume they'd want a big, a little bit bigger lot. So maybe we build eighteen. Not moderate income housing units. We, I mean, have we, have we done analysis like what is actually better?
Well, I guess it depends on what definition of better would be at that point, right? So if we're looking solely to increase property tax revenue and that type of thing, of course, you'll, you'll go for the most expensive homes you can get. And as many of those as you can. So whatever that makes sense, there's a, a balance in there. However, with this, the, the goal that we, uh, kind of the mission we've lined up with is because of the scarcity of single-family homes in Ogden City. We're trying to maximize the amount of homes that we can put on a project like this that still talks to the neighborhood around it. Right? So we want to be respectful of what's there and something that'll fit in, but not just fit in, but be a, basically a version of what you're seeing around it. But, um, maybe just one tick above it. And so it's, um, it's going to be a shining star. And that's really the motive is like, how many units can we get here? Because there's such a lack of single-family homes. And I think, I mean, if we looked at last year, I think there were five single-family home permits in the city. Right? And three of those were the cities. So if we can, if there's anything we can do to help move that dial and provide housing that's available, that's, I think. At least philosophically, why the city is, um, looking at this as the preferred project.
Jeremy, I'd just like to add to that too. I was involved in the, um, the elementary school project there. I think Ward Ogden was the. In your position at that time when that took place. That changed that whole area of town. And the objective behind that was that they would be moderate income homes as opposed to low-income homes, which. You know, we could have probably fit more homes there if they were low-income homes. But what's happened is the people that moved into that area, which I'm very involved in that area. So what we see is that the people that moved in have changed the entire neighborhood, not just where the homes were built. But the whole surrounding area around that home too. It's kind, it's very, it's stabilized that area significantly, which I really like. And so I commend you for the approach that you've taken because we could build low-income homes all day. But they just turn over into be rental properties kind of quickly. Plus the people that are moving into those modern income homes are going in and they're changing the neighborhoods. Which I think is a commendable objective. Long-term, I think it's more effective for our city to have that type of resident there than. And just have a low-income home. So I, I like the project. I like the way you've directed it and. I, I think that just continuing on what you've done in the past, this is a, is a great project.
Thanks.
One, one more thought, but Sean's comment just may, just brought up to me is, is perhaps we could make a policy. That, uh. You only get to buy one of these. You, you don't get to buy five of these, you know, uh, any one person. Uh, or entity. And, and I think if, uh. You know, if I buy a house and when I get ready to sell it, I'm going to sell that to somebody else that wants to buy a house. And, and that's kind of the way that. It stays out of it. I, I may rent it, but maybe I won't, you know? I, I think you, you got a better chance of keeping it in homeownership if you, if you don't sell it, don't sell five of them to an entity or all of them to an entity or.
Sure. And that's, I mean, one of the benefits we have is the city is we, you know, get to, they go through our, our application process. So there isn't entities coming in by and they have to be owner occupants when they buy them. Managing that after, you know, on the sale of it is a different story. That would need to be addressed with some, you know, if it's HOA restrictions or. Or something to help manage that, um, that's a different discussion.
Is an HOA something you would? Recommend or advise?
No, I wouldn't, um, for a couple of reasons is they have a hard time, um, being successful. So unless it's really needed, um, if you've got public streets, uh, public improvements everywhere, um, without. You know, common area that's shared or common landscape areas, that type of thing that requires an HOA to manage and take care of. I wouldn't, um, recommend it. That doesn't mean you can't have some, uh, CCNRs, um, and restrictions on the property. They'll help give them some guidance. We've mostly relied on code, uh, existing code and ordinance to manage that type of thing in the past. Uh, but we could definitely entertain introducing, um, some CCNRs on this project if we decided to.
Thanks.
Okay. One, one last thing. Um, de- define moderate income for me.
Uh, so moderate income, um, what we're looking at, this isn't, so low to moderate income is a. Yeah. I think the average, so if you're a single person buying a home, the way HUD defines that is just making less than sixty thousand dollars a year. And so moderate, that's eighty percent of median. I'd have to do the math on that.
Okay. So eighty percent of median.
Eighty percent of medium is sixty thousand dollars per year for one-person household. And so, I don't know. I'm sorry. Wish I could do that.
I'm just, I'm just going to plant this seed and if it takes root in some conversation, it does. And if it doesn't, it doesn't. When we're doing moderate income, I, I'm, I'm going to propose that, that, uh. By. I'm going to propose we need more market rate housing in this city. With market rate housing comes people with professional level incomes. That at the end of the month are more likely to have some, some disposable income in their pockets. And I, and that leads to economic development at the community level. And I think that we really need to begin to think about what kind of housing do the professionals? The seventy-five percent of the people that leave this city every day with their paychecks in their pockets, what's preventing them from living here? Is it housing? And if it is, what can we do to help that? And invite some of those people that are driving out to the suburbs every day to stay here because we've got housing that they want to buy. And they want to live in and they want to spend their money in downtown Ogden.
It's a great question. So let me just clarify on this. There are no income restrictions. And so when we look at moderate housing, our ballpark price range, if it was built today, we'd be looking at somewhere between. I would just say mid-four hundreds on a house is what it costs. It's about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to build a house like you saw there. That's what it costs. And so with all the other costs that go on top of that, um, that's, that's about the ballpark of where you're looking. Which, um, is tough for. is tough for even a professional that's making good money to afford, right?
Yeah, thank, thank you for that. Actually, that, that pops a bubble in my brain and I got a little breakthrough because rental markets are different. If you want to go down and rent at Riverwalk, they want to see your income. We, we're not limiting that.
No, there's no income restrictions. This is just the target market. When we say moderate housing that we're gearing towards, that's just the target market. We're, we're doing houses like this. So if, um, if we were doing a federally funded program, right, that's low to moderate income, those have income restrictions that we comply with and have to verify income, but this doesn't have any of those strings on it.
Thank you.
And so maybe I want to also clarify a little bit too, and maybe, um, maybe we need to start talking about missing middle, not moderate.
That's probably a better.
A better, better term for this. Um, I, I want to follow up with something that, um, Bart mentioned and maybe whoever it is across the street there.
I'm new to the council.
Right.
New guy.
Not that I talk to you a lot, but, um, um, I, I do think that we are at a, at a, at a critical stage. And I think Bart, you brought it up and Dave, you both, um, kind of mentioned it. And I think we do need to start really looking at, um, and this is outside Plan Ogden and Make Ogden and, and really looking at our housing stock. I mean, there are definitely, um, people that can't find a home here that, that, that it, they, it's not big enough or it's not, um, you know, they don't want to live in 900 square feet. And so, um, I think we do need to look at that as a big picture in Ogden and, and it isn't income restricted necessarily, but, but more about what is the product that we want people to be here and, um, and, and so I, I, I think that needs to be like front and center of stuff coming forward, whether that's how many light tech apartments we're building, um, where we're putting them, you know, those kind of things. So.
That's a great point.
And, and I don't know if that's what you were getting at, but, uh, Bart.
Yeah. Yeah, the, the reality is we have a, a deficit of all kinds of, of housing, especially, um, homeownership opportunities, right? And that, that's the whole spectrum, right? So the challenge that really comes up with that is you have people that are making more money than, um, and they would like to maybe upgrade and there's no place for them to go.
Yeah.
And so they stay where they are and that makes it so that house that they're in isn't available for the one that's looking to maybe move up or buy their starter home. Um, and so there's a gridlock in housing right now. And it's not unique to Ogden, but we, we feel it especially here because we're not able to really crank out a bunch of new units to help fill that. So it definitely is an issue.
I really appreciate the conversation, but I was actually gonna ask, and this is kind of a, a little bit of a side, but when I, when we're talking about this, that, that the city is investing all this money and that we are subsidizing this housing to a certain extent. But, um, I think I'm not interested as a citizen, um, subsidizing 700, 300, $1,000 homes for people because they can purchase, they can pay for that for the sack in that street themselves, if that's the circumstance they're there. So I guess that's part of the conversation too, is when the city is gonna be involved in creating these kind of opportunities. Um, who we put the cost on. So if we were going to build a house that was that much, then I would say yes, fold in the cost of all that with it. But since we're doing it for this reason, then we're subsidizing.
Yeah, you're, you're right on the money with that, Angela. And that's why, yeah, that's why I asked the question about why not fold all that cost of infrastructure into the cost of each of those homes? Yeah. I'm not for subsidizing a market rate homes either.
I just had one more question, and I think I know the answer. Um, when we list a a little, I mean, multiple homes like this, do we act as the listing agent and do anything? Or do we, we contract?
We contract that out. Yeah. So similarly, with, we contract to build the homes, we also contract with a broker to actually list them. And so we do an RFP, um, for that process.
I thought so. I just wanted to make sure. And I, I do support this. I'm, I, I like, I like, I was just, I was, I was just
You're fine.
Trying to think on a different side.
Absolutely.
All right. Sounds good. Well, we got this on January 7th to make, take action on, so. We're good.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks, Jeremy. We, uh, continue tonight from last week. So we'll invite Justin back here to pick up maybe a quick recap and then pick up where we are on this discussion. Um, this, this is an item that will come to us next week. So this is our time to talk about this one.
Thank you, Chair. Appreciate you allowing me to come back again tonight. And I know we rushed through this presentation last week, so wait for that to get pulled up. I thought it'd be, I, I guess, uh, from, uh, from, from you on, uh, as council members, is there a certain focus before we, or, or any questions that you have before I, I guess budgetarily, do you have any questions that I can start with answering? And then I can kind of leave that discussion and we could talk about the, the proposed uses, but as far as how this budget action is working so that we can, um, fulfill the, the requirements of the ARPA of ARBA so that we can have those funds spent. Is, is there any questions on that part of the budget opening? And what we're proposing to do there?
So, I mean, I can, I, I just, I don't even know where to interject my, my thoughts. So a lot came at us last week when you, I mean, and it was very fast, but regardless of that, um, wasn't your fault. And so as I started to think about this, is there a way? I, I mean, I like the way that we're doing this and using the mechanism for wages like that idea. And I'm wondering, is there, is there maybe more of a CIP? Un-
Holding room.
A holding, like a holding account?
That we could put it in because I think some of these might need to have more discussion.
Right.
And so, um, you mean, I, I agree with, I mean, I think all the CIPs are great. I'm not saying that. I'm just wondering if, if there would be a way to put it into a holding fund or something so that we could actually have more conversations about where that extra money should go?
Right. And I, and I know Janine had reached out.
Okay, perfect. And then I'm gonna go get my, my dinner. You can, so that's, I would like.
The answer is yes.
Yes.
But I guess maybe, and I haven't, I, I think I haven't talked to all of you guys about that, but that was a thought that I had, um, just because it came fast at us last week.
Yeah, we, we really don't know. It, I think $5 million for the jail. And really last week was the first time we heard about the jail. And what do we really know about that cost? And are we making a mistake putting that $5 million under jail? When we really don't have any information that supports that number?
Right.
Um, and for me, in August, or maybe it was a little later, I made a presentation in here and asked for all 9 million of it. Five for Lester Park and, or the remainder for, um, Lauren Farr Park. And the mayor, uh, came back to us with small group meetings and said, we've got about a million dollars worth of CIP money already earmarked for Lester Park. How about we take a million of the ARPA money and put in there? But in, at that point in time, I left that meeting, uh, with the mayor and Mara, uh, content. Knowing in the back of my mind that an alternative plan for Lester Park following the 2016 winner of the park design, um, was developed and the budget for it was somewhere around or approaching 4 million. So rather than push the mayor in my sm- small group meeting with him, I thought, all right, we have a million. He's gonna go to Chalet and they're going to come up with a design and cost that out. And when it's $4 million, not 2 million, that's when I'm gonna come back to the mayor and have further conversations about meeting that budget to complete the park. So I would really appreciate the opportunity to stage some of this money somewhere as Marcia has suggested so that it's more flexibly available or, or it isn't obligated to a particular item, Union Station or the jail or, you know, whatever it might be and is available for further study, further conversation and expanded use as might be agreed to by this council.
It's a great, great conversation. Um, so just a, a couple of things. And then if there's any additional questions, discussions, and if, um, any that I'm not able to answer, we do have a couple others in the room that I'm, I can defer to as well. So the first one, if council were to go ahead with appropriating the funds as is proposed, um, with the 5 million towards the purchase of the, the jail, the two and a half million towards Union Station, half a million towards, um, and All Abilities Park, um, the million towards Lester Park. Um, I was, I've informed to share this with, with your group today that administration would propose that because we don't know the final cost of what it's gonna, that for the, the jail and to demo that, and then um, whatever additional cost to do some landscaping to make it so it's not an eyesore. Um, what administration would propose is once that's complete and, and purchased and, and demoed and whatever landscaping to make it not an eyesore, whatever remaining funds, we would come with an additional budget appropriation back to you to move those monies to Lester Park to add to Lester Park. So that was, um, one proposal that we wanted to share tonight. So that wouldn't be part of this budget action. Um, but once, once the costs come through of however that the buil- building, um, the jail plays out, whatever remaining cost we would propose, that would go to Lester Park. So that is one, um, thing that we would share. Um, and as far as, um, uh, Councilmember White's, um, question about the appropriating funds to a single account, um, where, where we wouldn't adjust the, it wouldn't change the value of the budget opening that's been noticed. Um, we could create an alternate schedule that could be, um, considered for your, um, review for next week. Which would, instead of putting it into buckets to be able to use, you could, um, um, look at an alternate schedule of, of putting it into a single account to be held until, um, additional conversations could happen. So, so that definitely is also an option that, um, you can consider, um, with this budget proposal. The biggest thing with it is that we need to have the appropriation done so that we can make sure we spend those ARPA funds, um, by the end of the month. Um, we are in the process of, of coding, uh, wages so that we can report those wages, um, as the, the funds, um, being spent, so.
Justin, can I ask you about the netting? I think we're, that one might need to be appropriated to that.
Yes. So, so, so a little clarity. Um, so the netting and then the 152,000 that's going into the fleet fund, those were two amounts that, the, the 152,000 was part of an overall amount that we used for radio replacement. That's what was left. We want to set that aside so that we can still use it for any additional costs that may arise that after December. Um, the 70,000 for the net, because of the planning, um, and the study that was happening with 4th Street, they didn't, we hadn't gone out to bid yet to for the net, they put it on hold. And now that they've, they're in the process of doing that, timing wise and cost wise, we will not have that encumbered by December 31st. And so, um, because we're doing this budget action, we, we thought it would be, it would make sense to um, use that 70,000 towards wages and then take that cost savings and put it into the CIP fund under a recreation CIP to still be used for the net. But, so yeah, so that 70,000 we would propose still go to that CIP for that use. But the, the other items there are up for.
So the, so the 70,000.
And 152, yes, we would propose that 152 to the fleet fund as well, because that was at part of, um, what we wanted to use those funds for, what was already appropriated.
And there's no reason to believe that that net will cost more or less than that. We have a pretty good idea.
Um, I, uh, Justin Anderson's here and my initial, what I, in talking to Ed Bridge, our, our recreation director, um, initial bids were coming in around 30 or 40,000, so a little bit less. And so they were hopeful that by putting it into a general recre- recreation CIP that they'd be able to use it for the net. And then the difference, if there's any additional things with Marshall White, um, and stat construction's happening, that they could apply those there.
Okay. Your honor.
Yeah. So, um, with the Lester Park appropriation, do you also want that money to go into this holding account? Or do you want to appropriate it with this budget? I'm just trying to get some clarity for.
Yeah, I, I want to respect what the administration brought back. And yeah, let's, let's, I think the general rec fund, the equipment replacement, Lester Park, and then it, rather than three more buckets, we put it in a, um, a bushel. I'm, or I don't know.
Whatever they're.
Five, one gallon buckets and go into a five gallon bucket, something. I would like that. I'm just one of several.
I, I think, I mean, I, my, my whole thing, and I agree with, with Count, Vice Chair White on the just putting it into a bucket and not really knowing what those costs are. I, I feel more comfortable just putting everything that we don't have an actual cost established yet into that holding account and then appropriating it out of that. Now, I, I do get that Lester Park, um, we have some ideas. Um, I think that, that one proposal with the 4 million, there were some issues with that from implementation, but you know, maybe that, maybe that's still the appropriate place to be. I, I mean, I'm, I'd be okay with that too. I just think because I, it's probably gonna be in that neighborhood uh, around 2 million. So, or, or more. So, so my, yeah, I think we can, I would be okay with that.
And I, I apologize. I don't have a slide on this, but in the packet, there is a, uh, just a, what we're looking at with Lester Park, um, with what's been funded, what potential ramp projects that were, um, have been funded or that are gonna be applied for in, in the next month or so, um, along with the million dollars. So if you were to add all those, um, items together, that would put us at almost two and a half million. So if you take the, this million plus what's already been appropriated, plus potential ramp, we'd be at about two and a half million for Lester Park. So just as a reminder.
Okay. So just to clarify then, you, you're okay appropriating the Lester Park improvements, the netting, the fleet facilities fund for the radios. So there'll be $8 million that goes into this holding fund. So, is that what I'm hearing?
That sounds right. Yeah.
Haven't heard from this side. Are you, you all okay with that? Thank you.
So, so I just wanna, um, and maybe I, and Justin, this isn't, you said something about, um, um, if there's funds left over after we buy the jail or whatever, a- at this point, I'm not even sure we're gonna buy the jail. I mean, I think that, that rests on us and um, whether we want to do that or not, or whether we want to put those funds in there. So, um, I just want to caution us that we, we, we actually get to appropriate those funds. And, and so I just, I, I don't think that's, maybe, maybe you did say that. I don't know, but I, and then I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page then.
Any, any other questions that I can try and answer on this? I know this is, Nick comes before you next week. Yeah. So I will make a, um, and a, an additional, um, summary schedule and, uh, schedule B, which is the expenditure side, um, to reflect that depending on which way council decides to go.
Is it, is it possible to have a, a loose timeline on when we may have more information on all of these items that we've been talking about? I mean, I don't, I don't think we need to hold anyone to the fire on it and say, you know, if you say this date, then it has to be this date. But just a general idea that if we're talking about Lester Park improvements, what are we looking at timeline? If we're talking about the jail? I mean, just, I think it'd be helpful for us to, as we consider all of these things, because if we're putting money into a holding account that might sit there for five years because things may take that long to, to pay out, you know, maybe there's ongoing funds that could come later on and, and these monies could be a proportion, a portion somewhere else or, you know, those, that's just my thinking is I, that, that's what I feel like I've been missing a little bit on some of these is just what is the timeline looking like? You wanna, you don't have to, right? I mean, just, yeah, Justin looks like he's got something to share. So welcome.
Yeah. No, I can, uh, and, and the netting, uh, Justin Sorenson explained that actually perfectly. Um, this would just be just to give an update on where we're at with, uh, the Lester Park.
That's great.
Concept plan. And so we have been working on that with the designer and we're to the point. They're working on putting, finalizing some concepts. We fully expect to be able to have that completed, um, be able to share that with the public sometime, probably in February, early March to where we could prepare to implement some of the money that we've already had appropriated, um, to implement in the park. So we hope to be able to get that started probably late spring, early summer with the, with some of those projects.
Thank you. Anything else? Took a little less time than we maybe thought.
Yeah, Chair, just because we may have some time, is there anybody that can speak to what's the deal with the jail? I mean, until the question was asked last week around. You know, we, we, we hadn't heard anything about the jail or maybe a month ago. Um. Is the county ready to give it up? Has the county named a price? Have we bid um demolition, stuff like that?
Mary, do you want to? Share what you, yeah, welcome to.
And those are good questions. I don't have any, where, I know that we are moving forward on getting appraisals on, and demolition cost and. We don't have that information back yet, but we're, I, I expect within the next couple of months, we'll, we will have that information. So. We're actively moving forward on that proposal.
And is the, was it the uh, the Forestry Building that kind of gave us the, maybe an idea that, or a comparable? When it came to the purchase, I, you know, working with the county on that, did that help in that discussion or is that what, is that what spurred that?
Yeah, well, we're, we're still working, I, I mean, we're, we're identifying um characteristics of the building that will be provided to a, an appraiser. So, you know, for example, the. The footprint um doesn't have parking with it. It's very limited parking footprint. Um, so identifying. Um, what that looks like, the condition of the building, um, and you know, potential reuse, would it be just a tear down? So there's. There's a lot of different factors that will need to supply to the appraiser. So we're, we're assembling all the information, um, and then we'll. We'll come back with, with an appraisal um for that, so um. There's, you know, obviously for reuse, it's, it's very limited because it doesn't have windows and we know that there's a lot of. Maintenance requirements and all that, but um we may need to have. You know, could be a couple of different ways of looking at doing an appraisal. One would just be for the property itself and then. One might be if there are any potential uses, so we, we have a fair um valuation.
And Weber County has said, yes, we want to divest ourselves of this asset.
Um, we, I've talked to staff um as recently as yesterday and, and there is, there's, there's, there's an interest in. Um, Ogden City making a proposal to the county for that building.
Yeah, council business, do you mean that we have? Or is there anything else on that? Thank you.
Yeah, and just, just.
Thank you.
Follow up really quick. I appreciate um Justin's presentation on that and um. You know, just, I understand that your, your position on the ARPA and that, you know, just reflecting that we had discussed as, as an administration, the. Um, the fact that we were looking at, you know, up to five million on that. And so putting the balance of that into Lester Park. Would be inappropriate, but we've, um, we've, we've just taken some initial reviews and are, are very um. Positive, optimistic about the concept plans that have come back. As Justin said, that we'll be moving forward on getting some more public um presentation of those, but. Um, we're optimistic about um what's come back to us. So we're really positive about that. And I said, with the existing funding. That we have uh to add to the ARPA designation and we think it can be phased. And really have a, a very high quality. Uh, park amenities there that, that will be both, you know, local attractions and then portions of it may, may draw. You know. Out of neighborhood interest as well. So it's, it's some really exciting proposals. We'll look forward to sharing that with you soon if we've got that together. So. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Justin. All right.
The only thing I have, just a reminder of the holiday party Thursday, very sooner, seven o'clock.
All right. Anything else from the council? All right, we're adjourned till six o'clock. Thank you.